So I'm gonna get started this morning. I will start by reading our vision statement. The Ashland Public Schools cultivates the academic and social emotional growth of each student through a supportive, collaborative, innovative, challenging environment. Students will develop into self motivated, resilient lifelong learners who embrace their role as responsible contributors to a global community. This meeting is being recorded by WACA Cable TV and also I believe Mr. Adams is recording it through Zoom. Our business this morning is call to order, opening procedures, agenda review and adoption. And the one item on our agenda this morning is the COVID-19 update, the fall return to school requirements, and then we will adjourn. We do not have any time for public comment this morning, so this is just a listening meeting for anybody who's tuned in. And this is a continuation of our meeting the other night where we took in some feedback from all of the members in the community who were able to come to the meeting. So having said that, I'm just gonna take roll call and make sure that everybody's here and that everybody's okay with our order of business this morning. Mark Terry?
Here you go.
Aaron Williams?
Here and yes.
Paul Kendall?
Here and yes.
Tina Fatanides?
Here and yes.
Thank you. So good morning, everybody. I just do wanna remind everybody what we're doing and how we got here. We are considering specifically our mask policy, but also anything else that might be required for us to discuss today for the return to school. We took in a lot of comment the other night. Thank you all so much for everybody who showed up and offered a comment. That was a really good meeting. Everybody was very respectful and provided lots of good input wherever you stand on this. We appreciated your input. As I said at that meeting, that's just a piece of what we're taking in in order to make a decision today. Some of the other pieces are what the recommendation would be from the superintendent, the COVID Task Force, and any other information that the school committee wants to consider in terms of making this decision. So I'm going to ask you, Jim, first, because we haven't had a formal recommendation from you other than, you know, we did start also for the benefit of the community, we had a retreat this summer. We started the discussion there. We made no decisions, obviously, and that's sort of where we set up the plan to have the virtual meeting the other night to take input and this meeting this morning. But we also got started on some of our conversation in that meeting and Jim at that point did not have a formal recommendation. So I'm asking you today, Jim, if you do.
I do, and I apologize. I'm gonna read. I felt like I needed to put my thoughts on paper.
Okay.
So I'm just gonna. Yes, I'm gonna read. Yeah, a little bit. I just felt it was easier for me. So start with a little bit of levity, if you will, to mask or not to mask. That is the question. Whether it is appropriate to mandate all to wear or to allow those to go free of cover. Much debate and dialogue has occurred, but as a decision must be referred. So I was a big Hamlet guy. I loved it. But I've given much thought to how we should approach the opening of our school system this year. Trying to take out the emotion of masking versus non-masking, vaccinations versus those opposed to vaccinations, perceived infringement on personal freedoms versus collectively doing what is best for the entire community. And not to mention dealing with the rhetoric from both sides of the political aisle. This faces me with once again making a recommendation which will be considered by many to be overreaching and others not reaching far enough. I do not take these recommendations lightly and they cause me many sleepless nights. However, it is my job as the superintendent of schools to make such a recommendation that in my opinion is best for the entire district, our students, faculty and staff. As was stated numerous times Wednesday, we are not doctors, epidemiologists or health professionals. Thus, we must listen to the organizations that are full of these professionals, such as the American Academy of Pediatrics, the Massachusetts Medical Society, the CDC and the World Health Organization. And as I enter my eighth year superintendent here in Ashland, I've always focused on creating a safe learning environment for our students, faculty and staff. Without a safe learning environment, there is zero chance our students, faculty and staff can succeed academically, socially or emotionally. This means we must focus on the health and well-being of the entire population. And by doing so, allow us to participate in full in-person learning come August 30th. For state guidelines, I want to reiterate, we cannot revert back to a remote or hybrid learning environments. And based on our experience last year, many of us know these models are just not appropriate. And as having students out of school will do more harm than good academically, socially and emotionally. Our goal is to get kids in our system, in school every day, five days a week for the entire year. What I learned at the end of last year was having students in school full-time with face coverings, while not ideal, worked and was absolutely the right thing to do. We must have our students in school full-time and get back to the business of teaching and learning. By requiring facial coverings to start the year, we can assure this happens. What with masking, our need to quarantine is lessened, which again assists in keeping students in school. I do want to publicly thank the 240 viewers and 60 members who spoke up for their thoughtfulness in the civil discourse, which does not happen in every community on Wednesday night. I'm proud of Ashland. Even when we disagree, we do it in such a way that is respectful. After listening to community members on Wednesday and receiving numerous emails, calls, talking to local health professionals, monitoring our local COVID data regionally and statewide, it is clear to me that while not ideal, instituting a face covering mandate for students, faculty and staff in grades pre-K through 12 is not only a smart thing to do, but the right thing to do. So I'm recommending to the Ashland School Committee that we require all students, faculty and staff to wear a face covering inside the Ashland Public Schools and as mandated by federal organizations on transportation, starting Monday, August 30th, 2021. Additionally, outside activities are exempt from this requirement and the district should consider a policy that allows for flexibility when face coverings are used if it's detrimental to the educational process, as long as other mitigation measures are instituted. For example, providing speech services or being able to physically distance in a meeting without students if all are vaccinated. Those are just a couple of examples, you know, barriers that could be placed instead of using the face mask, I think, are something we should consider. I would also recommend that the district revisit the topic of face coverings on a monthly basis to determine if this mitigation measure should be revised with the first discussion taken place at our October 7th School Committee meeting. I recognize there are many unanswered questions such as when will we lift the face covering requirement? What metric will be used to determine when it is safe? What recommendations from DESE and DPH? What about the recommendations from DESE and DPH and why aren't we following their recommendations? I understand the frustration with these questions and others where answers are not being presented today. I've lived this for well over 18 months and have come to expect a moving target weekly. And I fully expect more guidelines to be coming from the state in the next few days. And as typical, I wouldn't be shocked if something happens on a Friday afternoon like today. It's something I've grown to accept as hard as it is. And I promise to the community, I will publish our reopening document no later than Wednesday, August 25th, which hopefully will provide some answers to the questions that are not being answered today. However, I'm almost done. I believe bringing roughly 2,700 students back into our buildings without instituting as many mitigation measures as we can would be an unwise decision. We've done everything possible from asking students, faculty and staff to get the vaccine if eligible, which many have. And I want to share as I I've dug more deeply into the actual data of Ashland Public School students compared to the state reports that we share on vaccines of our student population. The data that we see that we have internally with vaccination show that only about 74% of Ashland High School students are fully vaccinated at this time. And we're at AMS, where approximately one-third of our students are not eligible yet. The rate is at 61%. Remember, we have a lot of students who are between that age group that are at Keith Tech, are at private schools, who have in essence graduated as well. So our numbers, while high in the in the community in terms of the age group, do not necessarily reflect exactly what's happening on the ground within our schools. We are again adjusting how lunch periods work. Adding as much physical distancing as possible. We've added air purifiers to every room. We've updated our ventilation systems across the district and have done so over the summer as well. However, this isn't enough considering how contagious the Delta variant is. And while I hold out hope that vaccines will become readily available to our community in the very near future, until then, we must remain flexible in our decision-making. And as Ed Berman said to me this morning, please remind folks, we have spots available for ages 12 and up to be vaccinated. And we will continue to push that information out. So to finalize and to reiterate, I'm not a medical professional. But I've listened to the medical field and while there are opposing views to this very you know, very contentious at times, mask or unmask decision-making, I believe the decision is a decision that will help keep the entire community safe and will afford the Ashland Public Schools the best chance of maintaining a full in-person learning environment for the year. So that is my recommendation to the school committee at this time.
Thank you, Jim. And then Audrey, I don't know if the Task Force or you and Ed have an opinion as a force or if you have an opinion you want to offer just for yourself, but if you could just fill us in on where you guys stand today or you personally, if Ed hasn't weighed in.
Can't make the meeting today, but he did want to say that he is in favor of universal masking.
Okay.
I am also in favor of universal masking. I think last year, excuse me, with all the mitigation that we put into place, I think for me, from my perspective and the other nurses' perspective, that masks did help. So we're in favor of the masking too. And I did speak with Dr. Charter. I met with him this week. He's also in favor of universal masking.
Dr. Charter being the district physician?
Correct.
Just for people who don't know. Yeah. Okay. Okay, thank you. So does anybody have any questions for Jim or Audrey before I ask you all to to give some feedback on where you're all at, based on everything we've heard so far? Any questions before I ask for your opinion? Okay, so seeing no questions, who wants to, putting it out there, I'm gonna ask each of you, if you will. I figured the most efficient way maybe they do this meeting is to go around and see where everybody stands after we've had the opportunity to take all the information and reflect on it. So hopefully you've done that and you're prepared with some type of position at least to start and then we can take it from there. So typically the chair throws it out and goes last. If people aren't ready to do that, if you want me to go first, I'm fine with that, but I'm gonna ask if there's anybody who's ready with what they'd like to say.
I'm happy to start or let other people go first if they want to. I'm sorry, Erin.
I can go after Mark.
Okay, Mark then Erin.
All right. So I guess I want to start by echoing Jim's comments about appreciating the feedback. I don't think we've ever had a meeting with 240 people and I suspect it was more than that, people coming on and off. I did at least a count of the comments and came up with 64. Really do appreciate the fact that people are concerned about this topic appropriately so and that they took the time to share their thoughts with us and that they did so civilly. And as Jim said, we hear about stories in other school districts that are quite frankly horrific, some of which you see in the Globe or online about behavior, not about positions, but about behavior. And I really appreciate the fact that not everybody was was completely appropriate regardless of their position on the issue. I want to also acknowledge that, you know, people, we know as school committee members before we had that meeting that we were gonna be in a position where, you know, a significant amount of the population is not gonna be happy with whatever we decide to do. And so, you know, I want people to understand that we're gonna have to make a decision that is going to upset some significant number of people. I think we also all have to acknowledge that there's a significant amount of COVID fatigue. We're all sick of it. You know, none of us wants to be talking about masks anymore. And I don't think any of the school committee members or any of the people that work in our schools had any desire to be dealing with COVID when we either signed up for being a committee member or chose to become educators. And it's not what we're looking to do. You know, from what my lens, you know, our obligation as a school committee is to be concerned about the interest of the community as a whole. And you know, one of the things that really became clear to me in listening to the public comments the other night is there are people who certainly expressed the view that this ought to be a personal choice. And generally speaking, I'm a personal choice kind of person. But the thing that I think is really significant for us is we have a responsibility to everybody in our schools and their families. And that might be something hard if you're not in a role where you're looking at 2,700 plus kids and all their family members, et cetera, whether they're in the schools or not. That's a more significant task. And you know, I'd ask the community to understand that probably all five of us, I don't want to speak for anybody else, but we have a sort of a sense of duty and obligation to every one of your kids. You know, when we go to graduation, there's a joy in seeing your kids succeed and having accomplished a lot. And that happens with a lot of other things along the way. And so my thoughts are really coming from a perspective of we have an obligation to our kids, all of them, not just mine, not just Erin's, Tina's, Paul's, or his law graduated, but every one of them. And so when I think about how to approach this issue, I have to think about those kids that can't protect themselves yet. Those who can't be vaccinated. And you know, that's a significant obligation to me because when we talk about masks and you know, it being a choice, I generally speaking, I would want to agree. I think it's a choice when you're protecting yourself, but everybody has an obligation to protect everybody else as well. And I think that's where a mask mandate is important. Because I could choose even if I'm fully vaccinated, to wear a mask or not. But if I choose not to, I can still pass it to somebody else who's not vaccinated. And that's true of every one of our kids. You know, there are different data points about how frequent that is. We certainly know from the Delta variant that it is spreading more quickly. We had shared with us a data point last week about how much more transmissible this variant is and that instead of infecting one to three, this was the case with the initial virus, we're now looking at sort of six to nine or five to nine people being infected by everybody else. So it is more transmissible. And that means that even kids who are vaccinated can pass it to somebody who's not. And we have to consider in my mind that our kids are not isolated. We don't look at kids in a high school and say, okay, they're an isolated part of the community and we deal with the high school. They all have siblings or a lot of them have siblings. Some are older and out of the system, some are younger in middle school. And kids in middle school have kids in Mendez, brothers and sisters in Mendez. So you know, from my perspective, I really think we have to do a mask mandate. I do want to acknowledge that the biggest concern for me in moving forward with the mask mandate is the mental health aspect. I don't know how to quantify that or to sort of acknowledge, but I inherently believe that there is an impact there. And there was one comment, I don't call me it, on Wednesday about needing to support kids because there are mental health aspects. I don't know whether the mental health aspects are associated with the masks specifically or just COVID and COVID fatigue and the anxiety that goes with that. But you know, that is something that the community needs to understand that our staff are supporting kids with the mental health aspect. We're available to do that. We had some conversations, John Cutler, at a retreat about efforts to outreach and to be actively looking for kids who need support. So I do want the community to understand that those efforts are going to take place. Let me just one second to look at my notes and see if I'm skipping over anything that I wanted to mention. Yeah, I mean, ultimately, I think, I guess, just to put a head on it, the thing I'm looking at is not if people are concerned about data versus feelings. And I am a data person. I like numbers. I like looking at them. There's certainly data out there that some people will say says one thing versus another. Like Jim, I'm not an expert and I'll pretend to be. I'm not a data analyst. I didn't know we had so many in the community, quite frankly. And was kind of happy to hear that perspective as well as that people who are involved in the medical field. But in some respects, you need to set most of that aside and go with the people who are experts in the field. And so to me, relying upon agencies like the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics, professional organization made up of pediatricians, I need to rely on that. You know, and I think this committee has done a really good job over the last 18 months of constantly looking at what are the professionals telling them. And so ultimately, I really, I'm really relying upon that guidance coming from the CDC and the AAP at this point. Because I think that's what's appropriate to protect kids. So I'll stop at that point. Others have spoken. I've got some thoughts about specifics, but I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And then Erin.
Thank you. So I also prepared some notes that, and so both Mark and Jim have sort of eloquently sort of made some of the points that I had already made. But if I can come at this where I have a slightly unique position because we did unenroll our boys and homeschool them last year. And while the safety of the high-risk immediate family members was on my mind, it really was more of the mental health and educational experience after having a really, really difficult spring that I did not want to send them back into. And I do have a child who is sensory, sensitive, has sensory processing disorder. So the mask is a bigger detraction for him than it might be another child. I also believed at the time, I said, there's no way we can go back into school. I bet by Columbus Day that we'll be remote again or that we will have frequent outbreaks where they're in and out of school and it will be very disruptive. And I wanted to just provide consistency for my boys. And I also realized that I had a great privilege to be able to do that and that not everybody else did. So that said, I kind of got shown up and because of the cohorting, the distancing and the masking that we did last year, that didn't fully come to fruition and except for that holiday remote learning period. But that was exacerbated by people that were ignoring guidance on gatherings. And so I think we were able to keep the schools open last year so long. And that was also despite parents sending in sick kids. Those were waiting test results, people who should have been quarantining before a household case, like Ed and Audrey pulling kids off of buses before they went into the building because we found out a piece of information that morning. And I echo what Mark said about severe COVID fatigue. We also have to remember this time around, we are lacking the same amount of social distancing. Our classes are going to be double in size because we don't have the remote option and we don't have the cohorts anymore. And for me, I'm just not very hopeful for better adherence to rules and expectations, especially with this more virulent strain. That said, and I echo what Mark said again, it is nice to know that there's so many data nerds in the community. And I actually really appreciated that there was someone who was actually not pro masking, but had this experience in the medical field and working with the FDA. But I also think a lot of the data that people were mentioning is essentially old and it doesn't apply anymore. It was with a different strain. It might have been from six months ago, et cetera. And I look at these southern states that have already returned to school and their governors have essentially made their children guinea pigs in an inadvertent mask experiment. And it is the most recent data with this strain and this year's return to school. And I looked at that. It's sadly inconvenient that we are, it's sadly convenient for us in the north that we have these southern test subjects. But I feel for the people who are struggling with this down there. But we in Ashland get to sort of evaluate that real-time data. And when I see that, I'm seeing like, you know, Texas banned masks in schools. And then Dallas ran out of pick you beds last week. And then 16 Florida teachers have died since July. 10 Florida children under the age of 16 died just last week. I don't care if it's 99.98% are going to be fine. If you're a parent of those 10 children, it doesn't matter what the percentages are. And even more sadly is in Louisiana, 20% of last week's deaths were in the partially or fully vaccinated. And I get that Massachusetts is our much healthier places to live. We don't have the levels of obesity, diabetes, et cetera, which potentially make us stronger to be able to fight this disease. But all of this to me points for us to proceed with caution that aligns with the AAP, CDC and state guidelines, which is worth mentioning. Our state leadership is leaving us with a criminal vacuum of guidance. To put this on people that were elected to work on school improvement plans, building new buildings, community improvement, all of that, and have us making enforcing this decision on people that are not qualified to make health decisions is incredibly short-sighted. And honestly, it's them passing the buck. We also, no one's really mentioned the impact. We talked a lot about mental health. No one's mentioned the impact that children might have potentially losing a classmate or seeing a previously healthy classmate become disabled or hearing about a classmate that was in class next to you and then is now in the hospital. Because we know as much as we want to try to keep medical information private, those rumors and those stories do float around town. And we already have had children that are Mendez and Warren age be hospitalized from this strain and are now having long haul symptoms that are pretty significant. That said, again, like I kept my ways out with the majority of reason of being mental health. And so I completely understand this new normal in masking. And I'm certain that this is absolutely not how our children should be learning. And I don't think it's a small inconvenience. I think it has significant ramifications on social learning, relationships, speech development, school culture, and also perceived risk and the resulting anxiety from that perception. And we need to make every attempt to establish a rubric and evaluation rigor that moves us out of masks as soon as possible. I know Jim had mentioned monthly. I think monthly is the minimum, potentially every two to three weeks. To that end though, and I know we haven't really mentioned this yet, but I would not support a policy where we are pinning vaccinated versus unvaccinated students or staff and treating them differently. Our policies should apply across the board to the entirety of the community. Not pinning friends or colleagues against each other or having children defend their parents' religious or medical choices. I am empathetic to people who this has been a hard decision for. And I do believe medical freedom is a sacrosanct principle and the right to self-determination, broadly independence are a part of liberty. It's also not the job of our teachers to police their students, especially now that the class sizes are returning to a normal size. They need to be educating and evaluating for gaps that the last 18 months has caused and not fighting with, you know, vaccinated kids who are like, well, I'm vaccinated. I shouldn't have to wear it. Or, you know, this parent wants their kid wearing it versus this parent doesn't. How we would ever keep track of that is a logistical nightmare. So I believe that it should be either all in or all out. And echoing what Jim said about the flexibility for teachers, only in situations where the mask comprises the educational impact, such as teaching our emerging readers, those sounds and blends where the mouth movement is really important or our foreign language students, not just our ESL students, but like our kids in the junior and middle school learning either Spanish or French and where we can have those mitigations and where the staff feel comfortable to be distanced and whatnot. But I want the community to know, from my standpoint, I wouldn't, I really wish that the freedoms that we've all experienced this summer could be afforded to our children starting the school year. There are many families that either did remote school last year or homeschooled. And this is going to be a more difficult transition for those children than it would be for the kids who went to school masked last year. And it's just, it's really unfortunate. We're not in a place where it's just, it's really unfortunate. We're not in a place where we can do that. And I wouldn't in good conscience subject your or my children to masks if I didn't think it was prudent. Um, unfortunately, right now I do, and I hopefully very shortly, um, I won't think that.
Thank you, Erin. Uh, Paul or Tina, who, who wants to go next? Tina?
I'm happy to go next. Um. You know, I, I just want to start with, you know, kind of a similar thought to, to my colleagues in terms of saying how proud I am of our community, uh, for the civil discourse that was had Wednesday night. So many communities are not able to do that. Um, on the scale that we did, and I'm just really grateful that here in Ashland, we not only had, um, incredible participation, but it was a very respectful dialogue. Um, and I'm hopeful that regardless of how the committee votes today, that we can all continue to set a positive example for our kids by respecting the decisions made and really setting a tone, uh, for a positive and respectful school year. Um, I'm, uh, the, the only new member to the school committee this year. And so while I've followed the deliberations of the committee throughout the past eighteen months, this is my first decision-making. Um, my first time making a decision on COVID, um, your related policy, and I don't take that lightly. Um, I've listened very intently to the comments made at Wednesday's meeting. I have really read thoroughly through the record. Sorry. Um, I've read, you know, thoroughly through the recommendations from different experts such as the A P A, the CDC, the W H O and others. Um, I've discussed mass efficacy and the transmissibility of this current Delta variant with trusted and knowledgeable medical professionals. I reviewed the data regarding COVID in our community and I have read through the multitude of emails and resources that were sent to the school committee by various parents and community members. But at this time, due to the transmissibility of the Delta variant, um, the fact that vaccines are not yet available for a large portion of our students and the continual increase of cases and COVID transmission in Ashland, I believe it is in the best interest of our students, faculty and staff to institute a mask requirement for grades, uh, pre-K to twelve. Obviously with reasonable expectations to address students' health and disability-related needs. Um, you know, and I would echo, um, you know, Jim's comments. I think that's a very worthwhile conversation to have in terms of what exactly certain protocols look like um, in the building and, you know, kind of how we can, uh, you know, mitigate some of the, the, the po- potential negative impacts to, to certain students from masks. But you know, in June of last year, when the school year ended, I think we were in such a completely different place, you know, statewide mandates were lifting. People were starting to get vaccinated and many people really believed that we were returning to normal. Uh, and that mask would really be a thing of the past, but the Delta variant has completely changed the trajectory of what that return to normal is. And it really necessitates that we pivot to adequately address the safety needs and contain the spread of the virus. You know, as mentioned, I've taken the time to understand the recommendations and the advice of experts. And I've spoken to many in the medical community here in Ashland and beyond. And it's clear to me that the science really firmly falls on the side of masks being the most effective mitigation strategy that we have when we're looking to reduce the spread of COVID. Like many of my colleagues, uh, you know, have already mentioned, I deeply understand the concerns that parents expressed about the social and emotional impacts that COVID has on our kids and specifically, you know, having to continue to wear masks and and have certain protocols in place. Um, but I don't believe that right now, um, that that challenge of wearing a mask outweighs the current risk of increasing the spread of the virus throughout our schools and communities. I believe that it would have a greater impact on our children's social and emotional health where their widespread quarantines or illness or other potential isolation if there is a greater spread in our community. Um, and it would be far worse for our students. Their social and emotional health really necessitates that we get them back into the building um, to be with their peers, to be with their teachers. Uh, and due to the current circumstances, I believe that the safest way to do that uh, is to have them wear masks. One of the commenters that really stood out to me Wednesday night referred to our district's mission, which includes cultivating a student body that among other things embraces their role as responsible contributors to a global community. Um, you know, I really, um, appreciate and kind of, as, as Mark mentioned, really, you know, thinking of the community on the whole. Um, and I believe that that's a really important message to instill in our children. Um, it is a part of our vision for our district and, and what we hope to teach our kids. And I think, you know, um, looking at this through the lens of what we need to do to pull together as a community to safely get through this and this current surge uh, with the current variant, um, is, is really necessary. I'm obviously hopeful that rates will soon start to decrease and that transmission, transmissibility will lower. Um, that the Delta variant will pass. I'm also really hopeful that at some point in the very near future, we'll have a vaccine available for all of our students. Um, and you know, that, that no more COVID curveballs come our way. But of course, um, you know, we need to be flexible. And we need to respond to the circumstances of this global pandemic as it unfolds. And under the current circumstances, I really think that the right course of action is to have all students, staff and faculty, you know, in all of our buildings, wear masks.
Thank you, Tina. Paul.
If you would like to go first, you're welcome to, but, uh, I, I don't want you to feel like you have to go last. I'm happy.
Go ahead.
All right, uh. So I, I didn't prepare anything. I, I didn't want to take up a lot of time. I, I do agree that we should start masked. Uh, I think we've collectively all have the same goal of, of trying to revisit this, uh, as, as things change. I think part of the reason for me, and it's not as clear cut as, as it is for, you know, maybe apparently in the community. We, we already are changing a lot of the things that we ended the school year with, right? We had distancing. We had all these other mitigations that uh, we were doing last year. So to just throw us back into the classroom and, and not have masks, but while also removing the other mitigations doesn't really allow us the ability to effectively understand the impacts, right? And we don't have a lot of data that even isolates what masks mean. I, I saw a lot of people talk about, um, and even Erin mentioned the, the, the districts in the south. Well, they also have an abysmal vaccination rate, right? So how do you, how do you take that, the data points and those variables and isolate which ones are the most impactful, right? So uh, I, I think the prudent thing is we're, we're just getting this, this information. Uh, a week ago today is when, uh, D P H finally gave the protocols, uh, to the superintendents and districts for what happens in scenarios. We just got two days ago, what the recommendations are for banning chorus, right? These things are, are coming out right now. And I don't think it's very prudent for us to, you know, in a cavalier fashion, just because we would really love to, we think, uh, that these things won't happen or whatever. I don't think it's very prudent to start with, uh, without a lot of data, quite frankly. We don't have uh, enough data. We don't have enough time to properly and prudently do it. Um, and there, there's real consequences getting it wrong, not even just the, the, the health and safety, but uh, but also it's been very clear that there is no remote option, right? We have to close down for COVID. You know, that is, that is a real possibility. Uh, that eats into our five days at the end of the year, you know, and if we're closing down for COVID, it's not the same as a snow day. It isn't, oh, we're off on Tuesday, we're back on Wednesday. Uh, I mean, that, that's not how it's going to work, right? So we have, have to have that in the back of our minds that we have these logistical challenges if we get this wrong, right? If we get this wrong, I think we have a duty to the community. Um, to regardless of what people believe their risks are individually. Uh, we have a responsibility in my mind to not be a facilitator of widespread of this, right? Uh, and the things we do matter from that perspective. Uh, but there's, there's real consequences. We can't go into July having school, right? And so we're, we're, we're really up against it where if we close down for for COVID, what does that really mean for our school year? So I think we need to be very careful and prudent, uh, as it relates to that. And take a balanced approach. Uh, I, I heard a lot of people say essentially that until it's a hundred percent safe for everyone, we should wear masks. I don't see us ever taking that approach with anything. I think masks last year saved uh, saved people's lives that had nothing to do with COVID, right? We didn't have a, a flu year, right? Because of that. That certainly saved people's lives. So we didn't take the same approach with really any other health risk, right? So it can't be an all or nothing. You know, other people said that there's no data that suggests that masks, uh, help prevent the spread. I mean, that, that's, that's, that's not true as well, right? We, we know the masks are effective. Um, so we just need to take a balanced approach and, and a prudent approach and getting it wrong. You know, regardless of where you stand on whatever you believe the health risks are, there's logistical challenges. We need to get a school year in. Right? And we can't do remote and we can't go into July. So we, we, we closed down for, for COVID. It's not like a snow day. You're not just coming back the next day. So, uh, so we need to take all that into account and um, there are going to be times where we might differ from the guidance that the state or federal, federal level and I want people to understand that that's because we need to be able to take our community and what that means to us and understand that those policymakers have a much wider lens which incorporates different parts of the country, different parts of the state that have different situations on the ground. Um, and I don't think that it's necessarily a bad thing. While sometimes it's a lot easier to have mandates from, from hi- higher authorities. It's not always the best, right? We have a situation where space in our district is a premium. Others, other, you know, communities in, in state are, you know, have abundance of space in their district. So a decision that they're making at a high school level, for example, might be very different than ours for the considerations that they have locally. So I'm not opposed to having these put on our shoulders. So I think at some point it, it is, uh, you know, it's appropriate. Uh, and I, I think people need to understand this for me, having gone through it last year. This is a harder decision. Last year was very clear. We were in a very different situation relative to disease, right? No one could be protected from it. Um, and the, the risks were much, much higher, right? Because of that. Now it's harder. It's not as clear cut, at least for me, uh, this year, but I think it is a bit premature to um, come into a school, removing all mitigation strategies. Well, not all. We still are doing, and I think that's maybe one thing that Jim, you can clarify as well. All with other mitigations relative to the facilities, we're still doing, right? Uh, we're going to be doing all the things with air purifiers and all those other things. So I, I, I probably shouldn't have said all mitigations, but all, uh, all the mandates for mitigations from the state and everything, those are, those are relieved. So I'd like to see us settle and see what this, this year goes, how it goes, what the, and hear from the educators as to what is working in the classrooms from getting back to a somewhat normal education. And, and then revisit, I, I, I'm hoping that, that comes sooner rather than later. And, and I agree that you know, having a vaccine that's available for all of our students, uh, is, is one, is an important one because whether I believe personally or not, that those, those students are at a higher risk to this as relative to any other, um, disease that they're, they might come in contact with is irrelevant. Uh, it, there's a real, and we've heard it from some of the parents, there's a real anxiety uh, that people have. And right, wrong or indifferent, it's not mine to judge whether their anxieties founded or not, it's real. And that impacts our students. So the mask, while it has the negative, it also allows for those that have that anxiety, some form of relief from that anxiety. So the, you know, I think the, the vaccine being available is also a, a really important component to this, but um, so I'll, I'll leave it at that. Laurie, I could go on and like most of us could, but but that, that's, that's my thought. I'd, I'd like to see us revisit this. As Jim said, I, I hope that we can be making different decisions, uh, soon. But, uh, I think right now the, the right thing to do is to, uh, is to come in with a, with a careful and, and prudent approach.
Thank you, Paul. So as usual, by the time it gets to me, I mean, it's clear where this is headed. Um, the majority of the committee obviously is in favor of a mask mandate. And I am as well. So I'll start there. But in, in fairness to the community, and I know that there was concern expressed with the comments the other night, people wanting to understand how we're reaching our decisions and, and how, uh, all I can do right now is share my process of getting to the, the place where I support it. And so I will try to do that as briefly as possible. I certainly agree with a lot of the points made by others and have taken the same approach as some of you. Um, when I walked into our retreat in August, I think it was ninth and tenth, so it was a couple of weeks ago, just about a couple of weeks ago. Um, like most of us, um, I was coming off uh, a, a summer or at least a few weeks of no masks, going where we wanted, eating in restaurants, doing a lot of the things that maybe we were more careful about and and as a matter of fact, really not even tuning in or paying attention to the news to the extent that I was before, uh, when it was so important to be on top of it daily. And so it was kind of a respite and I walked in. Um, really just beginning to learn about the Delta variant and there was news about what was going on in the Cape in particular. So I followed some of that, but I was really super open-minded about whether or not masks were going to be needed for school this year. I wasn't clear one way or the other. And as we started the discussion and we did talk about the mental health aspect and anyone who has been watching our meetings or has done any work with Mike or Jim. Um, you know, they wear their hearts on their sleeves and their emotions on their face. And when we were talking about that aspect of it, I mean, I wouldn't have been surprised if somebody was this close to like crying over this. I mean, we were distraught, right? It is when you, when you start talking about some of the things that our, our kids are missing out on. And mine included, my kids are adults. I, and they have a daughter that works in healthcare. She hasn't taken her mask off for one day of work since March twenty twenty. Another daughter who's a teacher saying, uh, you know, there's not a human being that is not um, impacted by this, I don't think in some way. And, and, and it does break our hearts and it's not what we would prefer. So anyhow, I, you know, I was really, at least at that moment, um, I could I could be convinced either way with the right information. Uh, and certainly that was one piece of information that really impacted me. But we also heard that day from Audrey and Ed about increasing concern about the Delta variant. And I did my own research afterwards and also really listened carefully to the comments the other night. And in the interim too, the American Academy of Pediatrics came out with their position and the CDC, we heard from our own Board of Educators that, that the board in Ashland would prefer a mask mandate and their point of view is important to me. And I'm sure to all of you as well. Um, and I listened to the comments and I think Tina mentioned and probably the rest of you did as well, but I followed through on some of the links of the information that was provided. And, and frankly, there were some things against masks. Uh, and I'm not pointing fingers at anybody. I'm just sharing my process that that turned out, at least from my perspective, to not be true or accurate. Um, one piece of writing said, this was an email, said something about you COVID, if you've been vaccinated, you can't get it, nor can you spread it. And, and you know, and this is personal for me, but my dad is in the hospital very sick right now with COVID and he's been vaccinated. And it didn't take long to do some research with what physicians are saying about how it spreads from a vaccinated person to other people. And just because you're asymptomatic or you're protected from your vaccine, it does not mean that you cannot um, give it to others. So the combination of, um, you know, me looking into some of the medical resources that I respect and I understand the trouble with data and peer review just means that another person maybe looked at it, but that is kind of the standard that we use and we're not going to solve for that um, at this meeting or even this month. I mean, for us to break down and try to figure out, um, it, it's like a, you know, there's a few lawyers on this committee, you know, with a trial, everybody comes in with their own experts and at the end of the day, you just have to decide which piece of information feels more valid to you um, based on what was presented. So based on everything that I looked into and the medical experts that I've been following and I fully acknowledge that I have no experience in this area. Um, you know, o- over the last few days, I've really come to uh, believe that this is the, the right way and the best way for us to start our school year with a mask mandate. Um, I'm totally in favor of setting a time limit on it to review. Three weeks, four weeks is the comfortable range for me. Once a month is fine. If, if people are comfortable doing it a little bit sooner, I'm fine with that as well. Um, but I think, um, that's what I'm hearing the majority of families in our district want. Um, that's what the teachers want. That's what the superintendent wants. And now I'm hearing that's what the school committee wants. So, um, I, I just show my support for that as well. So.
Laura, if I can just, the, the one thing I, I kind of held back on before was getting into, um, well, the more we issues, you know, which you were just touching on, and I think a couple of other people did too. Well, the more we issues, you know, which you were just touching on, and I think a couple of other people did too. I I just want to voice my support for. Revisiting this on a monthly basis, um, and and I'd say not less than monthly, you know, so. Obviously, as things change, we'll look at it, but I do think you have to look at. Data over time, you know, information over time, um, maybe something comes out and is sort of shattering. Me two days later and and change, but I think. I I don't know that things are going to change in two weeks when I'm so significantly that personally I'd support movement. Uh, but I I do want to sort of go on record and say I my my position is not to support a decision now that would be. Necessary in place for the whole year. Um, that was one thing I wanted to add. The other is a couple of folks, including Jim and and and. Also spoke to some exceptions. And I do think it's appropriate to give principals or. Um, Kathy Silva's office the ability to make exceptions for. Educational purposes and and I'm thinking about the speech therapist type of example. Um, without being an expert in that area, but it's true, our educators are experts in those areas and. As long as you know, we're in a scenario where. You maintain like six feet of distance and and other things, take masks off, make it a little safer, make sure there aren't a lot of people in a small room. Um, I'd I'd want to at least create, if we're adopting a policy, I'd want that also some element of discretion in it. But not so, not to the point where it swallows a rule. I I'm not sure that I would go as far as. Um, it's like foreign language solely because, you know, it high school level. Kid and middle school level kids are intermingling all the time, right? And so I'm concerned that even though I appreciate the uh educational educational impact we have. The foreign languages that if um, what, you know, in foreign language in high school, people are able to take their masks off. It spreads within that with the kids and then those kids go and their math class and their English class. Um, I think we lose a bit of control, so I I am concerned about the impact on that program. Um, but I'm not prepared to kind of go with an exception that is um, that is that broad. Um, I think that's. Yeah, this is a kind of couple of thoughts that I had that are on a more specific level that um. Is I'm not sure where everybody stands on on those types of things and how to frame that or either whether we're going to. Resolve that now. Um, you know, or whether at this point, it does sound like all five of us are in favor of a mask. Start the year, sounds like something in the range of of two to four weeks or or a month. Um, is a period of time people want to be looking at this again. Um, and I agree with that. I don't know if you want to start dive into the sort of whether we're going to consider exceptions like that or.
Well, I think for the benefit of what motion we're going to make, um, anything that can be. Included in the motion without making it too complicated, especially for if we're on the same page about is everybody uh can weigh in briefly, uh. For purposes of crafting a motion as to whether you're okay with some flexibility. Um, with exceptions for the administrators and and certain cases when a a staff member has to pull their mask down to. Further the education of the students. Anybody have any?
Uh, I I mean, I I I. I support that flexibility. I mean, the challenge is if we tried to, this is where the balance comes in policies, right? This. You know, you try to write a policy and you want it to outline all those exceptions or not. And last year, we we went that route because of. The state we're in, right? Um, but it was come from someone and it was was difficult. Um, but I I support putting that discretion in the hands of the appropriate people and that's. My mind, Jim and the principal. So if somebody, um, and and Mark, I at least I think what. Uh, they were alluding to as far as foreign language and I think Aaron, you're on the set up, you can chime in, but I think it's more the. The teacher, if you're standing in front of the class and you want to show them how to do it. And you you you're you have the mitigation and stuff like that. That that's where I see, but I I would support something that. Um, allows the administrators in the building to approve. Um, either the use of different mitigations, like uh Jim alluded to, a piece of Plexiglas, if you're doing speech pathology or something like that or. Or just, uh, you know, to have those exceptions and flexibilities where they deem it's educationally appropriate and and beneficial, right? I I would I would support that and I I like the idea of of putting in in our trusted administrators' hands. Um, who I think I'll share. I'd feel differently if we had a different set of administrators, honestly, but I think they're going to make good decisions. And I think that helps compensate for the challenges we've all articulated. So I would be, I would support the the flexibility piece.
Yeah, I would as well. I just want to make sure that there's also um, the building administrators, but also, uh, you know, the Director of Student Services, because our. Um, you know, our students on IEP that need extra services, our English language learners, I think they are some of the ones who are the most impacted. Um, by mass and it can, it can be a greater barrier sometimes to some of the the individual services they're receiving. Um, it obviously, it it won't be necessary for every student or in every scenario for that mask to come off, but having. Ensuring that the flexibility is there um to determine on a student by student basis, a service by service basis, what's appropriate. Um, to make sure, um, you know, that that the students are getting the maximum benefit they can under the circumstances is is definitely necessary as well.
Yeah, I fully agree with uh Tina's point of view on that and um. And when I was talking about the foreign language piece, Mark, it was based on the feedback we had from the high school teachers. And so it really would be focused for the teachers only. Um, but again, I I. Uh, I second Paul's viewpoint that. We have a very trustable group of administrators that we we can allow that flexibility and I agree that if. It were different administrators, we wouldn't probably be extending um the decision making to them.
And then I wasn't, I wasn't trying to suggest that we try to um. Define the policy exactly what those parameters would be, um, but rather that it was an issue, I wanted to see addressed on on. Share your support of our administrators in that approach.
Like we're on the same page for that, so whoever ends up crafting a motion, I think that is, yeah. We we can all agree on that. And I guess the last thing, this isn't really for emotion, but um just. Supporting our, you know, our our teaching staff, we we do recognize that this. Uh, mask mandate brings, you know, challenges to your day all all day long, you know, and trying to monitor it. And um, that's a challenge and. You know, and whatever ways that we can support you or the administrators can support you, um. We we ho- are hoping that families watching um will share the importance of of complying with. Whatever rules we set, um, so as not to disrupt the school day, because everybody learns more if the teacher doesn't have to spend time. Policing. So I did just want to add that. It's really not for the motion, but just for the benefit of of where this decision is headed. Um, if if we could all work together to make it go as smoothly as possible. I think we will. You know, hopefully get out of it faster.
Yeah, you know, Lori, just one additional point that I want to bring up in terms of talking about, you know, the flexibility to carve out specific exceptions. I just want to. Um, kind of reiterate my opinion that obviously if the parent of a student is uncomfortable with that exception of taking off the mask. That it it's not a requirement that it come off, but in certain situations, if if. At least from my point of view, if if the parent is uncomfortable with that, I think that they should be allowed to say, no, I'm sorry, I still want my child to wear a mask. Um, in in kind of in this scenario, but to make sure that 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 they are part of that discussion. And in aware of what the the, you know, any potential carve out would be, um, so that they can have a say in it as well. Maybe not a say in it, but the option to kind of opt in or out.
Absolutely. And I think that goes along with, you know, sort of trusting the administrators to work with this, the families. And the teachers and the student to come up with the best way forward in those individual situations.
I think in a similar vein, you know, one of the things I think about, you know, this is not the motion, but you know, we've got a bunch of administrators on the call. Um, whether that staff member is vaccinated or not, probably something ought to be considered. And I mean, it having an unvaccinated staff member remove their mask for something. Um, you know, I think it's something they ought to be considering in terms of, you know, whether or not we're going to do that. And I think it goes to Tina's point as well. If we're talking about students receiving one to one services. Um, I'm sure there are a lot of families that are going to be concerned about an unvaccinated or more concerned about an unvaccinated staff member. Removing their mask, provide services in a vaccinated member. I know that places a significant headache and the. Um, it creates a point of information that people need to understand in making those decisions. Um, but I think, you know, from my perspective. We're providing a service to our kids, that's our job. And I think people receiving those have have a right, if we're going to be evading from. Um, what we think are the appropriate actions. Families need to understand if they're being put at an increased risk under other circumstances. So, you know, I'm not looking to put that into a motion. I really don't want to try to micromanage how administrators do things. Um, but I I do think that's an important consideration.
So, um, I think we have uh Stephen Marks on, right? Cause I think one of the other things I had mentioned that I was concerned with was the indoor sports. And so I'd like to hear what his thoughts are on and. Because it sounds like if I'm understanding everyone. The our current mask policy pretty much does what we are all saying, I think. So I don't know that it needs much modification. With the exception of potentially, um, the uh. Uh, providing the authorization for the the administrators, but then there's the indoor sports and so. Uh, I don't know if we need any mitigations for that or any changes, so I wonder what Stephen's thoughts are on that.
Sure. So, um, well, thank you. In the fall, the only indoor sport that we have is volleyball. Um, and we will certainly, you know, anyone, anything indoors, um, to wear their masks. Um, some of the other things that we're talking about is. Um, continuing to have hand sanitizer available for them, um, and we'll look at the bench, um. Whether or not they'll they'll sit on a bench or will go to chairs where there are sort of distance when they're not playing. Um, that's what we plan on doing for volleyball. Um, the other aspects of um indoors for sports are things like the locker room. Meetings and things like that. And obviously, anything indoors, if that's what that comes from this meeting with the vote is that. Um, everybody will be masked no matter what. So, um, volleyball lends itself to um to distancing. As is anyway, so um, so we're okay there.
Alright, so since it's a paraphrase, it sounds like you're you're not asking us for any any kind of uh exceptions for indoor sports, so. Is where people indoors are wearing masks, including athletics is is good, right?
Well, you're you and I think Lori are the, you guys are the policy subcommittee.
Yes.
Um, let me sort of frame out a thought for a motion and see if this gives you what you need to sort of go back to our policy. Um, so. That would be. That we modify our policies necessary. To continue requiring masks indoors. Um, that they not be required outdoors. Um, that we revisit the policy on a less monthly basis. And that. Language to allow building principals and directors, student services, or their designees. Make exceptions to. For significant educational purposes. I apologize if the person following in the background is speaking.
Yeah, so I I I think that's good, Mark. Uh, let me take a swag at what I was hearing and and maybe. You let me know what you think, so. Uh, because I think most of what you said is what the current policy does, we uh may we, we changed it for outdoor, right? Um, so that we retain the current uh policy as written as well as authorized. Uh, superintendent, building principals, uh, to approve face covering exceptions or alternative mitigations. As they deem educationally beneficial. Does that sound like something to add?
Yeah, the only, the only thing that I think we need to add to that is the director's dude services. Um, and I'd add language in there that say, you know, or their designees, because. Um, Mike Kyra could be in a position if Jim's unavailable to address that and assistant principal perhaps. Um, I'm not sure who in Kathy's office, well.
Mike and Jen Cutler as well, Director of Counseling and so she might, so.
Can we, can we use a term like senior administrators or something like that?
Administrative directors.
Yeah.
Yeah, want to do that.
Could we just say, uh, and try and try not to make it complex, right? Uh, in complicated here, but administrators, there are times. Kelly might be out of her building and the assistant principal is now the designee in charge of the building that day. So I think we've got to be thoughtful of of, you know. Administration i- in general.
How about senior administrators? Superintendent and senior administrators, I would still call.
Is a dean not a senior administrator? It's probably just more inclusive to say administrators or their designees. And then. They can assign that authority to somebody in their absence, fair enough? Yeah.
Did we want to, um, you know, kind of add to to the the kind of the carve out piece, um, rather than just. Educational benefit, but also health and disability related needs, um. Some of that may come into, I know that there are are already exceptions to the policy, you know, kind of in general, they they exist all the time, but. You know, I'm thinking also for, you know, kind of social, emotional reasons, if we have a student who was having anxiety attacks. Because of wearing a mask, like some, i- if if that happens to come up. Um, you know, to just to make sure that that those also fit into that that discretion. Of, you know, kind of the administrators to deal with any issues as they come up on a student by student basis.
Think that's in the current policy, Tina.
Okay, yeah, I I don't have it in front of me, I apologize.
I'm I'm reading it. Yeah.
And and I assume, Jim, you you would you would probably qualify that as educationally beneficial for them to be in a better.
Absolutely, yep, yeah, you're absolutely right.
And I agree with you a hundred percent, you know, I but, um, yeah, I I think they're gonna. They they would put that in that category, I would hope anyway.
Well, sure, but I just want to make sure that it's spelled out, um, and knowing that it is, like I said, I don't have it in front of me, so thank you for that clarification, Jim.
Yep, alright, so I think both a motion and I'll just kind of, we can add the. The text of the back part of the motion to the policy just as 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 a line, but. Um, so this is what I would, what I think we just came up with. Um. I move that we retain policy E B C F A face coverings as currently written as well as authorize. The superintendent administrators or their designees to approve face covering exceptions or alternative mitigations as they deem. Educationally beneficial. Is that what we?
Well, I guess the question is whether you want to, as a matter of policy, bake in the monthly review. I think we do that, whether it's in the policy or not. As a part of our commitment to looking at it that way. Um. And I guess.
Well, yeah, I've I've got to defer to the group. I I think we're going to do it, so I'm happy to add it or or not and. What what is, uh, Lori and Tina and.
Yeah, I prefer to call that procedure. Uh, just in case, you know, sometimes we have to cancel a meeting or whatever, I just wouldn't want it. Uh, the intent is to review it monthly or sooner. Um, and but I'm not gonna. I'm not going to fight any of you on it, but that would just be my preference.
No, I would agree, Lori. I think that's, I don't know that we need to spell that out in the policy per se.
Okay, if um, if not, then I'll second Paul's motion.
Okay, and then all in favor, Aaron Williams. Tina Fatanides.
I.
Mark Terry.
Hi.
Paul Kendall.
Hi.
And I for me as well, so. Thank you, everybody. And and Jim, do you do want to make clear too, like, obviously, this is just a decision on the mask policy? So, uh, I don't know if you have anything you want to say about any other recommendations. We're not deciding anything else right now. Um, but people have asked me, like, is there distance requirements or what are the other plans for anything else? You could just clarify some of that.
So, I mean, the only thing that we're we're dealing with now is um the facial coverings and. All of the information I stated at the beginning, all of the information will be posted uh by Tuesday.
Okay.
Wednesday at the latest, uh, you know, the principals in each building again are focusing on their own specific. Um. Challenges within their facilities, right? So you might be able to have, um. Dave at the middle school using the small gym again, which he's doing, I'm just saying for lunch, which separates kids at further distance than Kelly might be able to. At the high school with eight hundred plus students. And again, with that. Audrey and her crew are looking at how we look at the flow chart of potential close contacts. And so not all of this has been. Uh, vetted out and decided uh specifically, but by middle of next week, we should have all of that out to the community. Um, again, no, uh, when we look at busing, for instance, there's no such thing as. As everyone's wearing masks and the state has decided there are no no close contacts on busing. Uh, that's not. Um, something that that we have to worry about. Uh, but within the three to six foot range, we're trying to maximize as much space as possible within our classrooms. That being said, yes, we have larger classes. Um, thank goodness at the middle school, we added more staff. So we can reduce classes and and create more flexibility in terms of the physical distancing. Thank goodness at the middle school, we added more staff, so we can reduce classes and and create more flexibility in terms of the physical distancing. Um but to, that was the struggle I I mentioned is we don't have all those answers for folks yet. Um from a procedural standpoint, but they will be forthcoming in the next few days. But we we are only looking at adjusting. The recommendation from the Department of Ed and DPH by by mandating mask for all, right? That's that's what we're doing this morning. Uh all other um recommendations and guidelines. Uh and guidance, uh which is still subject to change. Uh I will say typically on a Friday, it changes for us. But uh that being said, um we are moving forward with uh schools trying to. Have a uh some semblance of norm- normalcy, right? So classrooms looking more normal. Uh with masks on make things so much easier for us um than no mask and. Uh trying to create some sense of uh elementary working stations, if you will, things of that nature. So. It's coming. Yeah.
Questions about it. So, yeah, we made our big decision of the day.
Right.
I just want to confirm with the group. So we're going to add that language of the motion into the policy, right? So we're doing both, so it's actually in the policy as well, um and not just just a motion. Is that correct?
That was my understanding.
Yes.
Yeah. And then the other point of cleanup is we do have those two other policies I mentioned the other days. The travel policies are all the students and employees that are no longer, if you recall, those are the ones. Um that had students who traveled to high risk states. So i- it isn't your normal travel policy. It was completely net new one that was based on last year's situation. Um and is no longer, even the even the qualifications of risk and things like that and and of the other states is is no longer there. So. Um I I would, I would want to rescind those to to make sure that our. Our uh policy manual is is up to date and we're not just ignoring some some policies there.
Yeah, I'm I'm in support of that. And if it turns out we need something moving forward, we'll we'll have to craft a new one, but they're they're not no longer appropriate. For this moment.
So I, so there's also two additional um. Related policies that we did not directly vote on because there was the travel form and the certificate of compliance that were procedural, but they are in our. In our uh policy manual. So um I kind of crafted one uh a motion that I think would cover it. So I I would move to rescind policies, E B C F D COVID travel policy students. And E B C F E COVID travel policy employees, as well as any policies procedures created to support. The implementation of those policies. I think that would get rid of the other two as well, even though we directly didn't vote on them, but there. Those are E B C F D dash E one and E two. So.
What what did those other ones do that did it just kind of create the the forms and the process for? Who to send the information to, that type of thing?
Exactly. They were put in there for how do you fill out a form and supply to uh the building administrators, the information of your of your travel.
Okay. And that's it. That seems reasonable if the policy is no longer going to be there, that we don't need the process anymore.
Right.
It's so presum- assuming that's the only thing it impacts and it sounds like it does, like I don't unfortunately don't have it in front of me, but.
They 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 were net new policies strictly for the purpose of uh of the COVID travel.
Um Paul, do you feel like we need to take care of that now or is it something instead? And the only reason I say is like, I think what you're. What you described makes perfect sense to me. Um and removing those because they just no longer. And they no longer apply because those standards aren't there, et cetera. The biggest, my my thought is I haven't had the chance to go read it and I still feel like I want to at least look at that um part of responsibility. I have no doubt that it's going to show um what you said and and I apologize because you did mention that we're going to raise that and I and I forgot about it. Um but that said, I, you know, the rest of you are comfortable moving forward, but that's fine. Um I also wanted to say is, you know, I mentioned uh the other day, I pretty much hit my heart stop. I've got to get a kid off camp. So I I will sort of in spirit support the idea of rescinding the policy. Like have the opportunity if there's time, but look at it again, just to satisfy that little one percent of, well, what about this kind of thought process? But um please don't let that hold you up if you really feel like there's a time sensitivity to the rest of your company.
Sure. Uh and 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 if anyone wants me to bring it up, I know, Mark, you're you're you have to drop, so it would be a benefit to you, but. I can bring up the policies and and they're they're not very long policies. Um so if you want me to bring them up and or I I'll do whatever the group wants. Certainly, my preference is to not start the year uh ignoring uh having having policies on the books that we knowingly ignore, but.
I need to sign off. Unfortunately, I have to leave this one to you. Thanks, everybody.
Smart. Thanks. I mean, I think I would be in favor of resolving it today, just so it's, I mean, I think we 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 worked on the, I know it's not in front of our 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 face, but we all worked on it. We voted on it, the purpose, it had a purpose that uh related to a a timeframe that we're no longer in and with under rules that we're no longer. And and I get what Mark's saying, but I think we could always put something back together if it becomes apparent that we we need something. But uh but starting the year with something on the books that isn't. Accurate policy and having to wait, uh you know, a few weeks to have a meeting to, or I don't know when our next meeting is. But that would just be my preference, but it's not. It's not a big deal either way.
I mean, so would you, if you would like, I can share um share the current policies. Just to refresh, refresh for those. Uh are you able to see?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the the preface obviously doesn't matter, definitions of who's covered, where the high risk areas are. So again, this was something we crafted specifically for travel relative to COVID, so it has no other ramifications. So notification of travel returning to school. So this is, this is the student um student one. Like I said, it it all it does is talk about what it means to travel to a state that is high risk, which isn't defined anymore. So. Um it's it's there's not, there's more definitions and and fluff in this than there is. And there is actually uh uh the other things. And the. Other one is the employee one, which is actually even more simple. The only real difference is notification travel isn't a requirement, it's just uh a request. Otherwise, they're they're uh the same policy.
Okay, folks. So now we've seen it. So does that, how do you feel about uh Erin and and Tina about either resolving it today or on another day?
I I'm fine resolving it today. I took a minute to go and look at these policies. The ones that I just wasn't familiar with was the kind of the the. The ones that went along with it that Paul mentioned in terms of the process. I hadn't looked at those pieces, so that was the one that I was unfamiliar with, but. I I'm okay moving forward with it today.
Erin?
Same.
Okay, so uh I I did read it before, but I'll read it again, just uh so I would move to rescind policies. E B C F D COVID travel policy students and E B C F E COVID travel policy employees. As well as any policies and procedures created to support the implementation of these policies.
Who's got a second?
Second.
And then all in favor, Tina?
Uh I.
Erin?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
I for me. So that passes and those are rescinded. Uh anything else before we adjourn? Last chance for members to ask any questions of. Me.
Lori, just just you know, for people who may have joined late, we just recap. Um where we stand um with regard to masking as well as revisiting. That's all.
Sure, yeah. So the the school committee has voted to start the year with a mask mandate for all indoors. And uh we will be revisiting that monthly. That's the intention and the plan. Um and we will get as close to that as we can, depending on when our meetings are scheduled, but we certainly want to put a timeframe on it. So that if there's a opportunity to lift that, uh we will be as excited about that as some of you. Uh but uh until that time comes, uh that is the way that we're starting the school year. Mr. Adams will be. Sometime the middle of next week, sending out further details about what else the district might be doing or requiring. Uh you can continue to write to any of us with your questions. Uh thank you again, community, for all your feedback. Uh that was. Uh it really helpful. Uh and it was great to have so many participants and so many different points of view and. Again, expressed so respectfully um and in comparison to other places, that is a big deal right now. So thank you for that. And other than that, I think we can take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor, our second? All in favor, Tina?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Erin?
Hi.
Hi. So have a wonderful weekend, everybody. Thank you for being here so early on a Friday morning. And we appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.